The Harper Creek Board of Education for August 12, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. As we all know, Bo is not here today, and Aaron is not either, so we need to... I'm going to have a motion to... A move that the Harper... Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education appoint Dr. Borders as Secretary for the August 12, 2024 Board of Education meeting.
Someone support?
It was moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mr. Halverson. I'll call the roll. Mr. Halverson?
Here.
Both were voting on the...
Oh, sorry, yes. Sorry.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Dr. Borders?
Yes.
Mr. Bass is absent. I vote yes. Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Sol is absent, Mr. Bass is absent, Dr. Borders is present, Mr. Halverson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Wallace?
Here.
Mrs. Waterson?
Here.
And student board members?
Can I give you some?
Yes, I will, but we have a quorum for the meeting.
Yes.
We had a discussion, a meeting right before, we interviewed four really, really good candidates for our student board representatives, and I want to introduce Sam Cook and Alex Siltner. They were... they're both juniors, and they will be our student board representatives for the coming year. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay. Mr. Ridgeway, any changes to the agenda?
There is no changes to the actual agenda, you will notice when we get to new hires, I did add another new hire into the list that I will talk about.
Okay, so communications president's remarks, I just have a few remarks. Thanks to everyone for attending here, those who are online. As you can see, I'm not Mr. Bass. Mr. Bass is not here tonight. And I do want to make a comment. Bo has been, I think he... it's his first meeting in nine-plus years that he's missed as a board member or as board president, and that's a pretty significant record of commitment. So we give him a hard time a lot, but he's been a really good board president and very committed to Harper Creek School, so he's having some time with his son, prepares to go to college, so. It's been a great summer, hard to believe, we just... Seems like we're just here for graduation. Starting the school already, lots of activity going on, so we certainly... We want to wish everybody involved, all the students, teachers, staff members, community members, as you get ready for the upcoming school year, so it'll be a busy time. On another note, I just became aware today, Mr. Greenman's mother passed away yesterday, so I'm sure the thoughts and prayers of this board and everybody in the Harper Creek community goes out to Mr. Green and his family, so. With that, Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Probably one of the biggest things, our middle school aftercare program was approved, and so we will start aftercare this year at the middle school, not before school, but just after school. Our license, we have two employees hired, I think it's up to, I might say the wrong number, but I think thirty-two kids to start, I'm pretty much guaranteeing that will grow as we announce that. Tomorrow is new staff signing day, so you're all welcome to come, we have a breakfast with the new staff from 7:30 to about 8, 8:15. The actual signing is going to happen at 7:45. Barry is going to be there with myself, the principals, and we will do a photo op for specifically, I guess, marketing our new folks and making sure that they feel welcome here at Harper Creek. Meet the Teacher Nights are coming up, middle school, high school on Wednesday, and elementary on Thursday, both from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have our all-staff breakfast on Thursday from 7:30 to 9:30, you're welcome to attend that as well if you'd like. We go through quite a few things, we do our Years of Service Awards, we honor our retirees. I have a short address to the staff, getting them ready for the school year. I know this year we're going to have a safety update from our school resource officers, and, you know, generally just get ourselves kicked off for this, but it's a really nice event. Three hundred and thirty, three hundred and fifty people in the room in our cafeteria at the high school, and it's just so full of excitement of our staff coming together. Really, I really appreciate it, one of my favorite events of the year. First day of school, as Mr. Smith had mentioned, is August 19th. I was going to show the turf video, but you've probably seen it, if you haven't, I can show it to you. That's... that is what I was talking about in doing short, targeted videos about things in the... in the school district, I'm going to continue to do that process. I did one other one about the Crosswalk Project. I have four or five other ones that are scripted out, ready to shoot, but we think, at least I think it is one of the best ways that we can market the district. I've been in conversation with some outside groups, entities, vendors, about what they may do to help us improve the, I guess, the video quality, you know, and taking it to another level. We talked about improving our communication and marketing as a board, and that was one of those things that I'm going to bring more information to you as I meet with some of these outside folks and what they can help us do. As a side note, the bridges on I-94 are going to start to be open, six and a half miles open. We expect nine mile will be open at the end of August, early September, so that they should be open for our buses after that first week of school. And then our joint board meeting, September 23rd at 5:30, is tentatively scheduled now, so you might want to put that on your schedule if you haven't. Bo said that they were still meeting and talking as board presidents, but that is the current tentative date, it would be a legislative update with legislators, our current legislators, maybe even some of the candidates. And then finally, there's a question about sixth grade camp that came up. We are going to sixth grade camp, we are going to go to Clear Lake Camp this year. There is two sessions of sixth grade camp, one of them is from September 23rd to September 25th. The other section, they're three-day sections, is going to be November 11th through the 13th, so half the sixth graders go out the first time, the other half go the second. The only difference is in Clear Lake is it's a touch more expensive, they have a lot more features that we were looking for, one of them being a school nurse on staff, others being having counselors where our teachers go out, but their counselors stay, you know, with the students in the overnight section. The cost is $325 a student, and so our total cost for the district is, if every student went, was about $80,000, but we do charge parents for sixth grade camp. Mrs. Thayer did indicate to me that they have been fundraising, they currently have $10,000 in their account, they plan on doing, you know, the fair before the homecoming, again, that's typically a big fundraiser, and they're also going to do a candy bar fundraiser as well to try to raise more funds so that they can have scholarships for kids that can't afford it, and hopefully offset some of the costs to the parents in general. But that did come up as a question from some of our parents. That's it.
Okay. Dr. Borders, any communications?
Just about the MASP delegate assembly representative. So...
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So this is basically, Dr. Borders is our rep, and Barry, you're the alternate, it's just a matter of if you can make it or not, if you can make it or not. So if either, neither of you can make it, then we have to assign something else. You have to declare our delegate prior to the October meeting, I think it's October 17th, if I remember in my head right. But we'll talk about it later in the meeting as well.
Okay. Okay, district updates, curriculum, Mrs. Williams?
Any need? Just a couple highlights, unless you have any... I'll ask, I guess, do you have any questions for the report I submitted? All right, highlight, summer school was a huge success. We ran into a little snafu tonight, we had kiddos that wanted to present and didn't get the memo, so we basically talked to each one, and the two that absolutely wanted to came in and we listened to them, similar to what we had before. Overwhelmingly, we're hearing the career connection that we intentionally did, the student voice and choice in the project base were a hit. I met with supervisors, and we do have some things we need to tweak around power centers and that, but all in all, it was very successful as we connect to our community and the careers.
There's some pictures of summer school if you didn't see it in the report, so.
Yeah. And then we have launched, our new teachers came last week, Thursday and Friday, I'm a restorative practice trainer, and those are... Those strategies are the foundation of Harper People, and that also went very well. The pictures aren't in here because it's had to be submitted before that. That was very well, and then as Mr. Ridgeway said, orientation's tomorrow, while we'll go over several old things and keep working with those new people throughout the school year. Oh, really, that's it, we had our retreat, but there's some pictures in. Mr. Ridgeway also mentioned, we're working on how do we thread in artificial intelligence and just be mindful. I call this more like the explore year, how can we, you know, get curious about what can we use? There's some policy information I think we'll be sharing later. That's all I really have, but we're ready.
Any questions for Mrs. Williams? Okay, facilities, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, I did submit the report as well, any questions on that report? As you saw, the turf is done, they had a couple camps on it, they started practicing on it tonight, they're pretty positive, everybody really enjoyed it. Also, as you saw, if you probably know anybody that came around the back tonight, the Crosswalk Project is moving along, they did the top coat, the asphalt Saturday, and they're moving across the street, looks like they started moving dirt over there for the sidewalks, we're hoping that's done by the week 10. And then we're doing baseball, softball fields tonight as well. And then lastly, just one quick note that we did make a change with our manager, management position with Dan Bur.
Our custodial group.
Our custodial, yes. We're very excited.
Any questions, any projects that you've seen around the area? There's a well project going on over here, I don't know if you guys realize this, but that well actually runs the Young Building down at the field, also our spring clearing system, sprinkling system. It has been giving us fits for a long time, we found out that there were, you know, pipes that were in really bad shape, so basically replaced the pipes about six feet down and then all the way in the front of the, well, the side of the middle school to the back.
Any other questions for Mr. Robinson?
Thank you.
All right, finance, Mrs. Overbar?
Evening, first I'm going to talk about the monthly board breakdown. It's still showing June since we're still working out of last school year, the audit is the first week in September, I did want to show you where we're at, the revenue, the only thing that's going to be changed in there is the state, it has an estimated August breakdown, but the final numbers, I was hoping I checked today, we don't get paid until the 20th, but sometimes they release what the numbers are, but that's very close to where we'll be, and then expenditures, I don't expect many more coming in, maybe a thousand or two, and so that has us at adding $440,000. If anything, it'll be a little bit more than that because of the state revenue, as I said, which would leave us with a $6 million fund balance, which is about 15% fund equity, which is good news.
That was our goal for years, 15%.
Yep. Next board meeting, I'll let you know, it'll be exact because it'll be audited and I'll have all the information in, so that'll be good news. I did want to touch base, there were some... You said that I called it the fun facts, just so that you guys know where we're at was a couple of things, childcare, we made... It's pretty much a break even, but we ended up making $27,000 this year. There will be a slight increase in pricing next year to the families to offset the increase in salaries and expenses, and I spelled expenses wrong, sorry, I just noticed that. The next thing is interest earned, we... There's a couple of things that go into that, one being the CDs and the money markets, just a higher percentage, and also we have more in the general fund, so all that increase is just extra revenue, the debt one was a big one, the $66,000 due to the money market, that's currently at 4.17, so that'll help reduce the number of payments to our debt in, as of right now, 2035. And then athletic info, I just wanted to give you, you guys had done a little bit of a... Anyone who has no... Who qualifies free and reduced meals, didn't have to pay athletic student fees, and then also students get a discounted rate going into games for the first time this year, and we were down a little bit, but not significantly. Part of that is also we had one less football game than the year before that, which is a... one of the larger crowds, and then student athletic fees, something that I just wanted to point out is that the middle school was actually an increase in student membership. I think high school was slightly higher too, but middle school was notably higher.
As you probably remember, we gave a break to student athletic fees by half a few years ago, and then we also have, you know, kids that are free when you use lunch don't pay, pay, and so it gives you an idea of how much we bring in as student athletic fees that we charge, that typically in the past has covered things like our student extra insurance for athletics as well as our trainer. I don't think it covers it anymore, it used to be.
It goes towards it.
Yeah, so the... we use casino money to make up for the remainder.
But that's just a couple of the items, I did also want to let you guys know that we have set up a meeting with Meta and with Ford Company to find out any financial benefits that Harper Creek may get from the Ford plant being moved in here.
Yeah, so they're bringing all of us governmental units that receive tax money from the Ford plant?
Or even potential.
And they're going to give us the estimate of what we think, what we think we'll get in terms of the taxes. It will more than likely affect our debt in a positive way, so, you know, we've talked about doing a bond issue, we actually had one on the ballot in May that didn't pass, and it could really positively affect how much taxes people pay in Harper Creek.
So we just found that out this week, the date, so.
Yep.
That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Good, thank you, Mrs..
Thanks.
Technology, Mr. Maynor?
Well, most exciting thing, I actually drew the picture this time, I knew clocks are starting to go up in the middle school, so you can see what it looks like there. There's about fourteen of them installed right now, I just put them up and I had some time while we're waiting for the installer to get around to setting up their process, so that's really exciting with the port having that done. Looks like it's going to be rolling throughout the fall, getting them installed, it's about seventy that need to go in that building, give or take, before we move on to the next, so that was really exciting to get that started. Otherwise, you know, things are rolling pretty well, our student devices are ready, we were finally able to order new servers and storage, we had some really good pricing on those two projects from Dell, so we're going to switch from HP to Dell, which is fine, I don't have the final quote yet because they're dragging their feet on it, and I'm going to try to squeeze them a little bit more first, but we got for much less than we thought we'd have to pay, so that was good.
Any questions for Mr. Maynor?
Yeah. I have one other comment from Elizabeth Inslee. Would you like to come up, Mrs. Inslee?
Yeah, if you come up, just state your name and address for the record.
I have to say, clocks, part of technology, not facilities, how far we've come. Anyway, my name's Elizabeth Inslee, 244 Watkins Lane. As some of you know, I've been advocating for suicide prevention for many years, and the COVID pandemic escalated the conversation and how to address it. So I'm... So most of us know what calling 911 means, right? An emergency number. How about 211? Now, that's community referral. 811, Miss Dig? Though it doesn't end in 11, do you know what 988 is? So have you heard of it? Since I see some... it's not a... So this is... This is 988, it is a national suicide and mental health crisis number, and it got started in July of 2022. And, you know, that means we're having a national conversation about suicide and mental health that we previously were not so keen on addressing. And so when I searched the... Your website, I found, when I searched 988 on the district website, it had spotlight, and it said Suicide and Crisis Lifeline with the link, then I searched mental health, 988 came up with the link, plus change to chill, and a link, plus sixteen other resources. So good for you, my question is, I hope the community knows it's there and they're using it, because if it's there and not in use, then it's not hopeful. So as you know, Michigan has had, you know, their share, one of the other states of mental health issues, addressing our youth and actually adults, you know, youth, there is ten are not immune from mental health issues. And so, you know, previous generations didn't have to deal with it, you know, I didn't, and some of my children didn't even have to deal with it, but that was before cell phones and social media, and the added effects of it that affected the mental health and self-esteem of everyone. So schools have kind of become the go-to for, you know, the go-to provider for mental health services, and, you know, that puts a stress on schools with everything else that you have going on, and plus the state is reducing the monies that are going to be coming into the district starting the school year, there's money supposedly that can come from another source, but, you know, when you take away money, then oftentimes it means you take away services. So what are school districts supposed to do about that because the mental health crisis is not going away? And I would hope that, you know, the 988 can be something that can be used, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's available, you know, I printed this off my home computer, you know, this is, you know, yard signs that one can get, you know, and it's a resource. So what I would like to, you know, advocate for is getting the word out, and since it's a federal program, the emphasis is to let people know that it exists. And then I'm not sure what the school counselor to student ratio is in this district, but according to the American School Counselors Association nationally, Michigan is rated 49th for the 2022-23 school year at 591 to 1. The group recommends 250, the national average is 385 to 1. So I'm just hoping that, you know, let's not rock the ball, you know, and still focus on mental health and specifically suicide because literally a life does depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, nothing else.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves the consent agenda as follows, approve the general fund checks, school service fund checks, school lunch, and student school activities fund checks in accordance with the list discussed. Approve the following minutes as reviewed. Approve July 8th, 2024. Approve the July eighth, twenty twenty-four regular board of education meeting minutes. Approve the July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four policy committee, committee meeting minutes and approve the August eighth, twenty twenty-four budget committee meeting minutes.
So move.
Support.
Been moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by uh Mr. Halverson. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Borders, could you, Dr. Borders, could you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mr. Best is absent, Dr. Borders is yes. Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Allward is absent, uh Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right, moving on to information and discussion, uh school safety.
We had our, our monthly school safety meeting today. Uh, we went through and talked about all the projects you heard from the project. I wouldn't call it the clock project, I would call it the classroom notification project because it, it also has strobes, uh speakers and it will be connected to our lockdown button, so when we push the lockdown button, then the strobes will come on, the lockdown sound will, 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 will come out saying we're in lockdown. So it's, it's a lot more than just clocks. Um, I am gonna talk to you about our emergency operation plan and hiring a vendor, a lockout company uh using Mr. Joe Humphries to um complete our emergency operation plan, it's something I was hopeful to do last year. But I have talked to other districts and they have used this group. The money would come from safety, money that we received from the state, this is carryover from last year that we need to spend by um, I believe, September thirtieth of this year. So I would like the board to approve uh in action uh us engaging with the lockout company with a not to exceed amount of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Hopefully it will be less, you might wonder why it costs so much. It will come with all the materials, it will have a emergency operation plan, which is the district plan, which is required by law. It'll be comprehensive, it will be up to, up to date with the latest of what we know about school safety. It will come with building plans for each of our principals and individual buildings and it will come with individual, Jim, I can't remember the name we called these, but inside of every classroom, there is hanging by the door.
Like flip charts?
Yeah, flip chart of uh emergencies that could happen. You know, obviously we know about fire tornado, but now we have lockdown, we have lockout, we have shelter in place and there's just a lot more things. It comes with a green and a red, so uh teachers can stay right away if, if they're, if they have all their kids or not. Um, and just has every possible thing that they may need and it gets us to the next level.
Kind of a Cliffnell version of it too, which is a condensed version, so they, it's a quick, it's a quick review and okay, this is going off, boom, this is what I've gotta do.
Yeah, because in the emergency, we know, we know what happens to, to humans, that they become overwhelmed with anxiety and now they have something they can look at in their hand without even remembering, what am I supposed to do in that scenario? Of course, we practice drills, but it's, it's just another way for us to do it, so I am asking the board to approve that and so is the safety committee. Talked about the clocks, uh crosswalk project, Jim talked about that, it is gonna hopefully, hopefully we will have open to the public when we start schooling the nineteenth. Uh, administration building, uh we have a secured vestibule um going in the front. Uh, again, that is with safety uh money. I'm really concerned that we don't have the safety money coming from the state because these projects are all a direct result of this money. Without it, you know, Elizabeth asked that question, what are we gonna do? Well, we, we used to write grants and lots of them, like uh individual grants, competitive grants and we will do that. But this was just much more, more fair or, or everybody in the state had the opportunity to do these projects. And so for us, you know, yes, we're gonna get some done, we appreciate that, but talk to your legislature, we really need, that money is, was, was well spent. Um, Jim talked a little bit about the camera project that he's finishing up, the servers that he discussed is a piece of that pie. Um, and then we met our new SRO, I told the SROs I would like for them to pick a month to come and have a conversation with the board. So you get to know the new person as well as what work that they are, are, are doing and thinking about. We, we did talk a lot about uh after-school events and safety, for example, going to large Friday night events. Uh, be that in the gym or be that on the, in the stadium and ensuring that we know exactly what channels we're using for the radios, who's in charge, uh who people can go to, if, you know, we tell them, see something, say something, okay, well, who do you say something to if you're at the game? So at the extracurricular event, we also have things like concerts in the, in the auditorium, which are fairly full. Who's in charge? You know, is it the director on the stage or is it one of the administrators that are in, in the audience that people can go and talk to about seeing something uh and staying safe? So those are, were topics of conversation today.
All right, item B, new hires.
Okay, we do have three new hires, um, two of them, I can put those up on the screen. Give you a little bit of information, uh Crystal Green, high school math teacher. She was started MA ten, she comes with quite a bit of experience from, from Athens. Uh, I would recommend hiring her, uh Christina Fletcher Wirt would be the Beetle Lake Elementary Student Support Specialist. That position is not a certified teaching position, so it would be out of the teacher's contract, but we follow the teacher's contract. And so that, I, I believe that level ended up being MA eight, the, the, the amount of money that you see on the screen. And then today, uh we had a retired teacher named Dar Smith who, I say volunteer, that's not the right word because she's gonna get paid, so. But she said, I will, I will step in for that position for the year, not just for a month or a couple of weeks, but for the year. And she will be um brought in at the full MA twenty. And remember, special education is fully reimbursed by the county, so it doesn't, it wouldn't affect our budget and we get a long-time experienced teacher who's done wonderful things here at the district. I'm really hoping that Mrs. Smith talks to other retired teachers of the benefits of potentially coming back. You know, because a lot of those folks are retiring in their prime and we don't, we wanna use their experiences when we can have, when, when we can, when we can. So I am recommending those three hires.
All right, item C, true policy updates.
Oh boy, all right, there was lots of them, so I, I should have brought the, the physical, the, the look, so the, the stack of papers was this. Five hundred and thirty-eight pages, I believe, was the final number, something like that, a hundred and fifty-five policies.
So many pages.
The policy committee did go through, well, when I say we went through all of them, we talked about each of them. Many of them were just really grammatical changes, uh maybe legal references. They did change the word, they went from parent slash guardian in the policy book to just the word parent and then defined it. Uh, that parent is defined as the natural or adoptive parent or legal guardian. So they, I think saving words, but that did affect, you know, us in terms of having to change those. And then I have some of note that I'm gonna talk about. So the first one is you've more than likely heard of the legal changes to Title Nine. Um, and so Title Nine has changed, there is some, some uh court cases currently about Title Nine. Uh, the recommendation from our attorney's office is to implement these policies and follow through with them because they are federal law. Federal law supersedes state law. Um, if we were under a court case or, 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 or we were recommended to have a stay in our policy, we will, but we are not at this point. Uh, the biggest difference is they are a, a, a batch of policies, policy three-one-one-five, A, B, C, D, E, F and H. And basically it just goes through and def, like, policy A defines everything. Policy B talks about the procedural rules and it goes through the whole things of what we need to do as a school district for the, for Title Nine and the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Law. And it, it keeps us in compliance um because of the changes. Another one I'd like to bring up is policy four-one-oh-five-A is new. It is, revolves around the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. Um, we have, are, actually been following the new standards already, it's not something that uh in practice we were actually doing. Uh, professional staff who, who teachers are, are part of, um, at the time of this originally coming out, when they had to do, when nursing mothers had to, had to, um, had to pump, let's say, they had to figure out on their own what time to do things. Now, we didn't do that as a district, but that was what the law said. The law has changed where now we are required to, to find time and they, you know, during work time, we have to find people to step in for them in their classrooms or if they have different job categories. But it's just uh changes because of the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. Uh, policy forty-two-oh-one and forty-two-oh-two, report abuse of vulnerable adults. It's very much like CPS, Child Protected Services, but for adults. And so I, the committee and I had a question, is what does that mean? I mean, if someone has, an adult has an issue, we are all mandatory reporters now? And they said, right now, to be safe, the school district should en- ensure their staff understands if you have a adult student that you can report them to, instead of CPS, to APS, the Adult Protected Services. And so that's, that's kinda the direction we're gonna go until there is further information about this Adult Protection Service. It's not something I've ever really done in my career. I definitely have had situations where students that are eighteen have had issues and if you try to put a CPS report in, it won't go. So APS is a, is a way to do that. I think it's been around, it's not new, but it, schools just have not used it, or at least has not been something that we've done. So we'll have to um make sure our staff understands that responsibility. Forty-two thirteen was a choice, so it's about nepotism, um, and so basically there was two choices. The superintendent makes the decision and reports to the board or uh the, if a case of nepotism comes up, then what it means would be a supervisor and, you know, a fam- a family member, uh the board would decide. So the, the committee said, well, Rob, we, we trust you, we, we're okay with you making that decision, but informing the board in those situations. They, it happens rarely, very rarely where we have a supervisor relationship. We actually try to avoid it at, at, at pretty much as much as we possibly can. Uh, for fifty-two-oh-nine, cellphone policy that we talked about the last meeting, that was updated to reflect uh what we're currently doing. Um, which is, you know, students can't have their cellphones on during the school day, uh they can have them on their person, especially at the high school, but they cannot have them on during the school day, so I, I just adjusted that policy. And then one we disagreed with and uh we want to make sure that the whole board understands and what, what we are suggesting. Flag display and pledge allegiance policy, Trun completely crossed out the flag display part and the flag display part said that a flag will be in every classroom as well as in front of each school building. Um, and so we disagreed that we crossed that out, I asked for um some more guidance, I have not received it as of yet. So my recommendation is to continue with our policy as is, that we leave flag display and the pledge of allegiance policy as is, instead of getting rid of the flag display. It tells you here further, I didn't know if it was a legal change or, I don't know.
Any questions on policy updates? Okay. Do we have any further comments from the audience?
She was riveted by those policy changes.
Oh, you missed a fun meeting.
I will offer, if anybody did wanna sit down and, and kinda get a deeper dive into it, if you, I, I guess I will put this up while Carla's doing that. You can see this was a summary document of the policy changes and it, and it gives you a brief for each one. So I mean, it's not, you know, that hard to read, it's nine pages.
No, and some of the changes were just like commas, were words.
No comments.
All right, thank you. No comments.
Very good. They moved some things around, yeah. FOIA, they didn't change at all, they just changed the way it looked. That's a big one for us. Just as a reference.
Good. All right, moving on to actions. Hearing for emergency operations.
Okay. The chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves a lockout company to consult, write and deliver the district emergency operation plan, building operation plan and classroom emergency plan at a cost not to exceed forty-one thousand five hundred dollars as discussed and reviewed.
So move. Support.
All right, been moved by Mr. Halverson, supported by Mrs. Wallace. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Uh, Dr. Borders, I vote yes, Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Best is absent, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Allward is absent, motion carries five-zero.
Okay, new hires.
Give me a second. All right, new hires, the chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves the following new hires. Crystal Green, high school math teacher, master's degree, uh MA ten, uh from Western Michigan University. Christina Fletcher Wirt, uh Beetle Lake Student Support Specialist, master's degree in family studies from Spring Arbor. And Dar Smith, Harper Creek High School Special Ed Teacher, MA twenty.
So move.
Support.
You guys gotta do all the stuff tonight.
Moved by Mr. Halverson, supported by Mrs. Waterson. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, call the roll.
Uh, Mrs. Allward is absent, Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallace? Um, Mr. Best is absent, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
And Dr. Borders, I vote yes, five-zero, motion passes.
All right, M A S B delegate assembly.
So I, I looked at my notes, it is the twenty-fourth of October. My memory did not.
Yeah, it's up in Lansing.
In Lansing, yep. Six, six, basically six to eight-thirty is the commitment.
Yeah, and you know, they're, they're pretty good about, I was there last year and it moves along. It's a little bit too much chatting in the middle, but otherwise, you know, it, it does move, so. Uh, I did this one already, there we go. Uh, the chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education assigned Dr. Borders as Region Six Delegate Representative and Barry Smith as Delegate Alternative in the M A S B twenty-twenty-four delegate assembly on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four at seven PM.
So move. Support.
Moved by Mrs. Wallace, supported by Mr. Halverson, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing, call the roll, please.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Allward is absent, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Dr. Borders, I vote yes, Mr. Best is absent, motion carries five-zero.
I would suggest, uh, I suggest ask, if anybody is interested in going to the M A S B Annual Leadership Conference, it, it is from October twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh. So it's over Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or, or parts of those days. So if any board member does have interest, just talk to me or Carla and we will definitely sign you up.
Yeah, the, the uh assembly is the kickoff for the conference.
Getting of conference.
Yep.
Okay, Trun policy updates.
Uh, the chair calls for a motion that the Harper Creek Board of Education approves the Trun policy updates reviewed by the policy committee.
So move.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Halverson, supported by Mrs. Waterson, uh is there any discussion?
Do we normally just do the vote in after one presentation?
Well, we used to in Neola do two different times, but with Trun, they, they don't suggest you do that, they suggest you put it in place.
Okay.
So it's, it's kinda the way, it's just a change. The way this, the, this procedurally works is once this is approved, I actually have already gone through all the policies and made the updates. And so I'll get those to Carla who will work on her part of getting it uploaded, so hopefully, you know, a week or so, we'll have everything up and, up and running. Uh, then we'll cross-check that against our, our student handbook as well as our staff handbook.
All right.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Um, Mrs. Allward is absent, Mrs. Waterson?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Best is absent, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes.
And Dr. Borders, I vote yes, motion carries five-zero.
Okay, um, items for the next meeting, we'll, we'll uh reach out to all of you, as he always does, and uh get any thoughts on items for the next meeting agenda, if you have anything that's on your mind right now, speak up, otherwise you'll, you'll hear from Mr. Best.
What a great meeting.
Oh, you know, sorry to take.
You did a great job.
We're gonna have to give Bo a hard round of applause.
All right, hold on, Mr. Secretary.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.